Seven, you guys ready? Good evening, I'd like to call the Ferriesburg City Council meeting to order Monday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M., Ferriesburg City Hall, roll call please.
Mayor Police.
Here.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Sias.
Here.
Councilmember Murdoch.
Here.
Councilmember Kate.
Yep.
Uh, invocation by Councilmember Kate, filed by pledge allegiance, please stand.
Gracious God, we thank you so much for the blessings of the day now past, we ask your same blessings for the night ahead. Pray for your guidance and direction as we exercise your gift of government, in your name we ask it, I'll be.
Pledge allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Okay, public comments, this time on the agenda for any citizen, direct brief comments or questions of the city council. Time for public comments will be given when an agenda item is discussed, if you have a comment or question, please raise your hand, be recognized by the mayor. After being recognized by the mayor, please give your name and address for the record and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Seeing none, moving on. Six, consideration for approval consent agenda, A, approve the April fourth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting minutes was printed. B, adopt criteria for speed calming devices on city streets.
Your Honor, I move for the approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion support, further discussion, I did have one thing on here on the minutes, twenty-three dash zero five one, uh, we moved to reject the bid. Do we need on that Craig to say it passed unanimously on that? Yes, we do, okay, so can we add that on there? Okay, any further discussion?
That one also be, um, adopt, amended to say that we recommended just fitting it with a crane, isn't that what we did?
Director, council staff to look at a crane for the existing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Seven, new business, A, discussion, take action if appropriate, to approve a bid from Strain Electric for two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars for new parking lot lights at Ferriesburg City Hall, Craig?
So there, there's only one parking light on the east side of the parking lot there on Ridge Avenue Parking Lot. We've been looking to try to get some light on the other side and we've had a couple of technicians come in and look and try to find power to the other side of, by the ball diamond. And we haven't been able to find any power out there, so Strain Electric, uh, they're doing some work on the bridge and everything, they're in town here. So we asked them for a quote to put some, um, parking lights on the one side of the parking lot and they came in with a quote. And you see on the quote that to, to get the power to the east side of the parking lot, they want to run overhead wire. And so there'd be an overhead wire in the parking lot and there'd be a steel pole and a wood pole. And there wouldn't be matching poles and it'd be over, overhead wire, so we wanted to bring this to city council, see if this is something you'd be willing to approve or you wanna, uh, look at something different.
Yes.
I'm gonna move that we approve the, uh, the bid for Strain Electric to, uh, the two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars uh, for the new parking lots, lights, the Ferriesburg City Hall, it looks like that's probably the best situation we're gonna come up with and we definitely need, uh, new lighting out there. Support.
Uh, motion support, further discussion?
Yeah, I got.
Go ahead.
Oh, Craig.
Rich.
Um, what are the provisions made for, um, to make sure that we're downlighting and not lighting up the whole neighborhood?
Specs in that, that came with the quote shows that it's one of those that we has down shine light on it. And then it'll also have auto dimming on it during the night when there's less movement.
Thank you.
Will, you had something?
Yeah, Craig, are, are these power lines gonna hinder anything, we bring fire trucks in here, we bring some D P W trucks in here?
Think so, that pole, wooden pole is gonna be forty foot high.
Okay.
So I think anything that comes in would be below that.
Okay.
Here.
Is, uh, one light sufficient or can we DC chain off that in case we have to add additional?
One on the east and one on the west, so we, I ask them if we are going to expand in the future.
Are we removing any poles?
Removing the one on the east side and put it in the steel pole over there.
Okay. And that footing is good far?
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
We don't know if that was a light there or someone said it might have been a flag pole at one time, not sure exactly what was there.
Okay, and it looks like Strain Electric's gonna donate one of the big poles. So that's kinda nice. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask city hall to be sure to write a thank you letter for the donation to Strain Electric for this.
Yep, that's a good idea. Okay, seven B, discussion, take action if appropriate, pro- improvements to the Community Energy Plan Task Force Steering Committee.
So your honor, there's been a, a task force meeting to talk about community energy plans for, um, doing, um, upgrades to, uh, residents' homes in the city and they could apply for a loan, low interest loan or something like that to do some weather stripping or improvements in their house. And now they're trying to focus over to having, uh, from the task force to having a steering committee. So this is on the Jennifer City Council to decide who is gonna be on, on the steering committee. Uh, if you want residents to be on the steering committee and if so, how many? If we wanna have residents on the committee, um, do we wanna advertise it for, or there was a couple of names, uh, listed in the, uh, literature, uh, that might be possible candidates.
Yes.
I think we should, uh, treat this like we do with the, um, our non-charter committees such as the, uh, Coast Guard Festival, uh, committee and, uh, you know, send a member, a representative, since we are spending money, uh, it'd be good to have a representative on that board. Um, but I think we should give the, uh, the public an opportunity to, uh, have a say in this and see if anybody's interested.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Um, I know that there are people, citizens interested on, serving on this committee. Um, ideally, I think I would like to see maybe as, as many as two citizens and one council member on this steering committee and, um, I like the idea of setting it up, you know, like, um, uh, Councilman O'Donnell had recommended. Um, but I know there's a lot of interest in serving on this committee, so, um, I'd like to give as many opportunities to the citizens as possible. And, um, you know, as far as council members, I, I would, would not mind, um, going further, you know, on this committee and I don't think Will would either, um, you know, either one of us could do it. That's my opinion on it.
Okay, do, um, how long have you guys been meeting, has it been almost a year or no?
No, hasn't been a year.
Six months?
Yeah, maybe less. It hasn't been, I don't think it's been, maybe it has, I don't know. Time flies, I guess, doesn't seem like it's been that long.
Six, seven months at least.
Okay, so who's on it now?
Uh, myself and Jerry.
You and Jerry and Ryan and that's it?
Well, no, every municipality has representatives on it.
Representative from B L P and, um, there, there are, um.
And Grand Haven, City of Grand Haven and, um, I believe Grand Haven Township. So everybody affected by B L P.
Okay. So what are they doing Craig, are they doing kinda the same? Two council members and then one admin and then two citizens from each?
I haven't heard from each community, this was the recommendation from the person in charge of the sta- steering committee.
From, from Ryan for us, but I was just curious on.
Honor, I, I, I think right now the, the task force is waiting for the approval of other cities and townships um, for their donation and to hiring a consultant, which we did last month. Um, I think the committee is now waiting for, um, Spring Lake and maybe Grand Haven Township or Spring Lake Township for their approval. Now, uh, before we can move forward, then we, um, hope to hire a, um, consultant to give us better ideas on how to move forward um, with B L P and creating a sustainable grid and then whatever recommendations that consultant gives to the city, it's up to us to move forward if we see fit, is kinda how it's all being set up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there's five members from each community, that must be a pretty good sized group.
It is, it is, yeah, I'd say twelve, fifteen people generally in a meeting.
How often do they meet?
Once a month.
Once a month.
So, is that the third Thursday at noon?
Yeah.
At Grand Haven City Hall?
Yes.
Like to, uh, the, um, point, or just, uh, advisement, uh, that if, uh, Will were to get appointed to that, might want to, um, sign the uh, possible conflict of interest document. Uh, even though D T E is not part of the, or consumer, or consumers is not part of that right now, uh, they could.
So, so I've signed conflict of interest for my work, um, and disclosed with the council, consumers is involved in it, I work for D T E Energy. D T E Energy is not in the service territory, so, so they will not be involved in it. But I, I'm happy to, you know, still continue to disclose that.
Right, there's always future potentials.
Yeah, there's not potential, they can't move their service territory, so. Yep, yeah, no, utilities aren't moving service territories, so.
Okay, so what do you guys, you think that's two council members, one admin, I mean, and that's probably Craig, right? And then two citizens?
That's a lot.
You think that's too much?
Let's just see how, what kind of interest is that?
I mean, we already have interest, um, uh, Gary Post reached out to me, he's interested, he's been involved in going to meetings, we went to the last one. Um, looks like a couple other mem- uh, community members are involved also, so we do have interests, I just, five people from every community is a, a lot.
I would think three would be sufficient.
I, I would like to see two citizens and maybe, uh, two residents and, uh, one council member, I don't think we need two council members, how do you feel on that, Will? Or do you like the fact that, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with either, Craig, does Grand Haven have their own sustainability task force that is separate from this? I, I think they do.
They have an environmental board.
Or environmental board, they, they have another board that, but has provided some advisement to this. Um, I don't know, maybe that's the way we go if we have that many people that are interested and, and then we can have that board give opinions for the two representatives or one representative or whatever we decide that are on that committee. Just a thought, but I don't wanna front load this with five members from us. It looks like other communities are deciding today, so, I mean, we have time, we don't need a name or anything today, right?
Oh, if you wanna advertise for a position, we can put a little ad together, that's our applications.
I think doing an ad, posting it and making the public aware would be good for us, see how much interest we have.
We can do that, the question would be how many do we wanna positions do we wanna advertise for, two?
You wanna do two citizens? One council, two citizens?
Well, we don't have to advertise a council, we just wanna advertise for residents right now.
Just two citizens?
Yeah.
And then?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't, we don't know how many they're sending. Can we put up to two?
Up to two citizens, okay. And we could have maybe one, one council and then one alternate, in case the other council member can't make it, I don't know. Just a thought. Alright, so let's do hmm, we gotta take action, so I guess let's, somebody make a motion to, uh, have two, up to two, uh, community members on the steering committee.
Community, excuse me, community, uh, community members or residents?
Hmm, ooh, residents, city residents.
Yeah.
City of Ferriesburg residents, how's that?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if we can, are we able to edit what we ask them Craig? What information we gather from them, cause I would be curious to know if they're a B L P customer or a consumer's customer.
Yeah, once we get the program and call them, sure.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that's important for us to know, cause we're, we, we are pretty split with, uh, consumers and.
That's one from each.
Right, that's what I was. Uh, so I'll make a motion to direct city staff to, uh, post for up to two, uh, residents appointments to the Community Energy Plan Task Force Steering Committee.
Second. Okay, motion support, any further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, one city council member or a city council member and then alternate? Do we have to decide that tonight Craig?
No, we do not, we can wait to see what the other committees are doing.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carried. Uh, seven C, discussion, take action if appropriate, adopt a resolution regarding pension assistance. Okay, Craig, you wanna go through this?
So, last year when the state was putting together the budget, there was a house bill introduced that would put a million do- a billion dollars towards pensions, unfunded pensions in local communities. And so, um, uh, that one billion dollar, seven hundred fifty million was gonna go to communities that were funded less than sixty percent. And two hundred fifty million was gonna be allocated to communities that were funded over sixty percent. Uh, when it got all done, I mean, the hospital never passed, but the, uh, legislator earmarked seven hundred fifty million dollars for pension relief to communities under sixty percent funded. So, uh, so Managers Association of Michigan got together and, um, drafted the tax resolution to present to our legislators to ask that we, they reconsider, uh, including two hundred fifty million dollars for communities that are funded over the sixty percent. And so this is what's on your, um, agenda tonight is to consider adopting this resolution to show support for including two hundred fifty million dollars for communities and we give this to our state legislators, so they're aware that C- the City of Ferriesburg is supporting this. I'm not sure of two hundred fifty million dollars, how far that would go or, um, how much that would increase the funding of, of the City of Ferriesburg, or anything would help.
Your, your honor.
Yeah. Tim, and then Will.
I, I'm gonna move that we, uh, adopt the resolution, uh, Managers Association, uh, Regarding Pension Assistant.
Alright, motion support, further discussion, Will?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Seven D, introduction of ordinance number three two seven and ordinance regulate vehicles passing bicycle. Uh, that was actually something that I brought up to Craig and gave him the information. Um, the state law reads it's three foot, so if you're on a road, uh, doesn't include like, uh, a separated multi-use path, this is the actual street and road. The state law passed, oh, back in two thousand eighteen for three foot. It originally came about as they tried to pass a five foot concessions back and forth, back and forth, they settled on a three foot. But there's other municipalities, other areas that have passed five foot bicycle passing ordinances or laws. And the ones that have done it are, uh, in this area Norton Shore, City Muskegon, I know Whitehall's working on theirs now. Ann Arbor, Dearborn, Grand Rapids, Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo Township, Oshkamow Township, Portage. Um, but some of the things that, eh, what comes to my mind is, of course, there's you know, issues with speed all over the city, so that's one thing that could probably maybe hopefully calm down the speeding motorists if they know there's a five foot lawn passing bicycles. But I think, you know, if there's a calmer, safer atmosphere, you know, it starts with the streets. Um, and I think that's something that's, uh, would be nice to have that in our community. And there is information in your packet about all the, about that in here. Yes.
I have one question or maybe a statement, um, w- w- we currently have bike paths now and a lot of bicycle, bikers choose not to use the bike, with bicycle paths and, and go on the road anyways. Um, would we issue tickets to bikers that choose not to use the bicycle path and use the road?
Um, only if, the way it works now is only if it, it has to be s- viewed by, you know, like a sheriff or authority that, that vehicle didn't give at least three foot to pass somebody, so this recommends five foot, so. But yeah, that could be a possibility, but enforcement, of course, has to be when there's a police officer right there to see it.
I guess my question is, if, if somebody is bicycling down the street, when there is the opportunity to use the bike path, should motor vehicleist be ticketed for that biker's decision not to use the bike path? If the bicycle, if the biker's using the bike path?
Yeah.
Then there shouldn't be an issue.
Right, there wouldn't be an issue, correct.
But if the biker chooses to go on the road rather than use the bike path, which is recommended by the city, did, uh, should a, a vehicle be ticketed for not giving that bicycle as the five fi- foot passing? You kinda get what I'm saying?
In a way, yeah, in a way, I mean.
We, we put bike paths out there for bicyclists to use and they still choose to use the road, so now should we ticket vehicles for their decision to be on the road and not the bicycle path?
Yeah, I see what you mean, it's, but right now it's, there's a three foot law anyway, so this is only extending it two more feet on the left or right. So there is a law right now, now, like I said, is it enforceable, yes. Has it been used a lot, probably not, no. But, yeah, I, in the, in the bicycle riders usually if they are riding on the road, they're gonna be more like the road bike racer, they're, they're, you know, for speed. If they're a slower rider or a fat bike or mountain bike, they'll probably ride on the bike path.
Yeah, my concern is this is just difficult to enforce, we already have a state law that's in place. Um, I, I feel like we're overcomplicating it a little bit and how does, I, I, I guess I'm curious, how does someone driving through Ferriesburg know that when they pull into our city, now they have to stay five feet instead of three feet away from bikes?
Yeah, you could, you could feasibly put up signage to say that. But, yeah, that's a, that's a question that, um, uh, some other communities probably have asked before, so.
Correct.
Yeah, the three foot is, yeah, is what the state law is now and a lot of motorists, they probably don't even know about that law anyway. So it, it comes down to driver's education classes, more promotion of what the existing law is and they can actually be ticketed if, you know, police officer catches them, you know, and they own, don't give three foot.
Right, I mean, if, I guess my point is, if someone doesn't give three feet, they're not gonna give five feet, that's not gonna change anything.
Right.
You know what I mean? Um, that's my concern, uh, your, your honor, I got a question for Craig.
Hmm?
Craig, have we had any complaints from bicyclists?
I have not received any, no.
Okay.
Similar question, we had any actions because of, of violating the three foot? Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't think, i- if they're not three feet away already, they're not gonna be five feet now.
Your Honor, one of the things I find interesting about this is where we define what a bicycle is. It's not only, um, pedal driven, but it's also electrically driven. And you see people all over the place driving around with essentially electric, uh, motorcycles that are uninsured, unplated and are not obeying, uh, stop signs or anything else. And we're including those in here.
You mean like a, a li- electric bicycle or what do you, you more?
Definition.
Motor, motor powered assisted?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably mainly means like the e-bikes.
Yes.
With pedals on them.
Yep.
But yeah, if it's a, you know, moped, that is, that's not a bicycle for us, so. Yes.
One concern I have on this is, this is kind of a, you have to be really good judgment of distance. I mean, you, you're driving down the street and how can you tell if the person's three feet, four feet, five? And, I mean, ten probably, but, uh, you know, when you're over the other lane, that's plenty of room, but, um, it's a good thought, I don't know if it's enforceable. And it puts kind of more of a, uh, perhaps, uh, the vehicle's more in, in danger, cause they're gonna, they wanna swing out to make sure they're given plenty of room. I alw- I always do, but I've got, I've had some bicyclists, cyclists that like to ride right down the middle of the lane.
I al, I always do, but I've got, I've had some bicyclists, cyclists that like to ride right down the middle of the lane. You know, that, I mean, they'd have to go in the other, oncoming lane and we got some pretty tight corners out here on North Shore. Pretty hazardous going across those lanes.
Right, it's more of an awareness thing. As opposed to, uh, physically, you know, catching somebody. My thought was not, you know, having the sheriff's patrol right in front of the bicycle riders, of course, because you never know when the bike's going to go down the street or not, so. My thought was more of an awareness that, you know, for to help, you know, lower the speed, speed calming measures too, because as you know, there's a speed issue all in this whole city. North Shore, Spring Lake Road, Ridge, Pine, everywhere, so.
I, I think what, what we really benefit from is perhaps a, uh, you, you were talking about signage. Other, other cities do this. Perhaps a public education of, of, uh, you know, share bike, you know, share the road with the bikes and, you know, you, you know, just beware of, of bicyclist signs and crossings and not more beneficial than just passing another law that's, that's I'm thinking that, you, you were talking education. That's what we really need to do. So.
Part of it, yes.
Maybe on, on our, our website, we could, uh, point out that we, we have a, a lot of bike paths in this, this area. William Ferry Park is the, uh, is the joining of, uh, six different bike paths. And, uh, so we start outside, signage down there in that area. We got a lot of heavy traffic coming into Fairiesburg. They were a biking community.
We do have a sign on a hundred and sixty eighth, just south of Van Wagner, that says share the road. It's got a little bicycle logo on it.
Is there like a bike safety week or something we could promote this during?
Might be, there's.
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, there's a national Bike to Work Week and that's, I think, in May. So probably a bicycle.
Sure there's a bike safety week.
Yep, there's probably a bike safety week too, on a national or state level. Well, it's just an introduction, so.
I know, Your Honor, I know it's not up for a vote, but I, I'm just, I'm not in favor of creating laws on top of laws.
Sure.
Never have been.
Okay. So it looks like consensus not move forward with it, Craig. All right, let's move on. Any other discussion? Oh, okay. Seven E, discussion, take action appropriate. Schedule work session on a regular agenda item, May first, twenty twenty-three. City budgets on the list here. Anything else we want to add to the work session?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would like to take, have us take a look at the, uh, solicitation uh, ordinance.
Okay.
The, what I received in my packet, uh, there was a couple of things that I think would be excellent additions to, uh, that ordinance.
Anything else we want to add? Um, I can't think of anything. Yes.
Not next m- m- month. I don't think I'll be here, but, um, at some point we need to create a committee, um, conjoining the Brownfield Committee with the, um, ener, with the, um,
Economic Development Task Force.
Yes, yes.
Oh.
Um, yeah, we need to do that soon.
So we are, we are advertising for that position to be a joint committee right now.
So I'd like, um, I'd like to see us discuss the, what, uh, what was visionary, visionary, uh, and, and plan and have that assigned to the appropriate committees. Is there stuff there for planning and beautification and recreation?
Okay. Anything else for the work session? Okay, you got enough info, Craig?
Thank you.
Okay, seven F, consideration for adjournment, closed session, to consider the purchase of or lease of real property prior to obtaining an option to purchase. Roll call, please to.
Your Honor.
Yes.
We were supposed to vote on that last one, weren't we? Let's take action.
Oh. Yeah, I guess we do, okay. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the items for the work session?
Still moved.
Support.
Motion support. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, now we're at F, consideration for adjournment, closed session, to consider purchase or lease of real property prior to obtaining an option purchase.
Make a motion to enter into closed session to consider the purchase or lease of real property pre, um, prior to obtaining an option to purchase.
Uh, motion will, support, Jerry? All in favor? Well, let's do a roll call vote to go to closed session.
Councilmember Carlson?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Kay?
Yes.
Councilmember Sias?
Yes.
Mayor Blis?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to closed session. You can come back later, Kayla, if you want. We're gonna turn on the video.